Good evening and welcome to the January 8, 2019 Milis School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Milis Public Schools website under School Committee and all times are approximate on the agenda. My name is Stephen Catalano. I'm the chairperson. The secretary Kerry Roach is going to be late. Robin Briggs.
Here.
Mark Conroy.
Here.
Denise Gibbons.
Here.
Teacher rep Bernadette Lindgren. Student rep Drew O'Reilly. And the superintendent Nancy Gufferson.
Here.
Okay, so we're all here. Jody, is there anyone signed in for open session?
There is not.
Okay. Several action items. First action item is to consideration to approve the December 18, 2018 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the December 18, 2018 School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Second.
A motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next action item is to consideration to approve a donation of Bose headphones in the amount of $20,803. Ms. Superintendent.
Yes. Through the efforts of one of our parents, the parent of high school student Mike Bennett, who is an employee of Bose Corporation, employees were given the opportunity to nominate schools to receive grant of free headphones and Mr. Bennett nominated Milis High School. His request was approved and in November, Milis High School received the shipment from Bose containing 54 Bose SoundLink on-ear Bluetooth wireless headphones and 60 AE2 wired headphones for a total value of the donation of $20,803. We are very grateful to Mr. Bennett and we would like to seek approval of School Committee to accept this donation. Very generous.
Very generous, Karen. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we approve the Bose headphones donation in the amount of $20,803.
Second.
A motion's been moved in second and as this is a donation of over $1,000, we need to have School Committee approval. This is a very generous donation. I'm sure they'll go to good use. So a motion's been moved in second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The next action item is to consideration to approve an out-of-state trip to the Netherlands in April of 2019. Or is this going to be?
This is this spring. Yes, in 19.
So there's a typo on the?
Agenda.
On the agenda, which is fine. We can still go, we can still do this.
Because last year in 2018, Bernadette Lindgren was our stellar chaperone for the trip last year and I think this one will be the fourth trip Bernadette. Do you know?
I believe it's just the third.
The third trip. Okay.
Mrs. Mulaney went the first time.
Mr. Mulaney.
By the way, last year. And Mr. Neville will be the chaperone this year.
Mr. Neville. And we are fortunate to have this exchange program with the Netherlands and there will be approximately eight high school students who will be traveling to the Netherlands. The students came in the fall and stayed with those host families here. From the, the students from the Netherlands came and the high school in the Netherlands that we visit specializes in STEM, science, technology, engineering math and it's very interesting. The kids get a lot of culture, escorted trips into Amsterdam and the Hoag and learned a lot about World War II. I was fortunate to join them on last year's trip as well. And they happen to be visiting the high school that my two nephews graduated from. So it was just circum, happy circumstance. I recommend that we, you have the itinerary and it's from April 13 through the 19th. And what I love about the exchange program too is that it's a reasonable cost because other than the flight, the host families pick up the cost of living and room and board and other than, you know, shopping or, or spending money, it's a very reasonable price and the kids get a lot out of it.
Okay. As this is an out-of-state trip and it's out of country, we need to, it needs to have approval. The request that's in front of us does have dates of 2018.
Right, so just to clarify, the dates the superintendent just listed of the 13 through the 19, that was when they went this year? The trip, this was a similar itinerary?
Okay.
Oh.
So the trip dates Nancy are around the 11th through the 19th.
So we, we don't have to vote the, we don't have to vote the, we just have to vote the dates of travel. We don't have to vote, but that's good that we see the itinerary so we have a, I'm sure it's going to look very similar. Yep. Perfect. So we are voting for a trip of Thursday, April 11, 2019 through Friday, April 19, 2019. Just to clarify, the itinerary was a model itinerary or an example of last year's.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Yes.
Oh, thank you, yes.
I was just gonna make a, I was just gonna make a.
Ms. Gibbons.
I make a motion to approve the out-of-country trip to the Netherlands, the dates of April 11 through 19, 2019.
Second.
A motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And last, do you wanna, do you wanna wait on the substitute? Why don't we, can we just do the teacher rep and the student rep?
Sure.
And then so allow them. Mr. O'Reilly, would you like to give your student rep?
Sure. So winter sports are now in full swing of things and Bethany Snyder just won the mile at the freshman and sophomore meet. Seniors are also continuing to work on their senior projects. This week, a lot of seniors have been meeting with their mentors to discuss their projects. For example, Kristin O'Dowd visited local police departments this week and gave care packages for Operation Gratitude for her senior project. And then second term is also coming to an end.
Thank you, Drew. Ms. Lindgren, teacher, meet, teacher, no, sorry, I'm having a hard time.
All schools are closed from next Friday, the 18th of January through Monday, the 21st. So all students are off, the teachers will be in on that Friday. There is a winter concert at Clyde Brown on January 24 at 7:00 PM. The middle school has been participating in the dollars for Don Fungrazer. It was kicked off on Monday. There was a week-long raffle and other daily events. Teresa's money for the Diaz family. The middle school library teen council is organizing a Harry Potter reading event on February 6 in the library. And there's an honors breakfast this Thursday shortly after 8:00 AM in the middle school. The high school, the library teens are organizing a mystery event in the library for January 25th. Any student attending the Galapagos trip must stop by and see Ms. Palladino at 2:20 this Friday. And juniors and seniors that are interested in service learning have to turn in their forms to Ms. Joseph by this Friday.
Thank you. We took something out of, from the action item a little bit out of order and I'd like to go back to a memo on the consideration to approve a rate change for the substitute pay. Mr. Wiggins, would you, actually, do we, do we need Terry to come up or?
No, actually.
Terry, please stay there, I'm sorry.
You can opine if you'd like, if you'd like to join us because he did the projections. Okay. Basically, as you know, on January 1, the minimum wage in Massachusetts was raised to $12 per hour for this year and next year it goes to $1,275 per hour. Also, we have a stronger economy and a lower rate of employment, so we are proposing to raise the pay of our substitute teachers from a model that had three tiers before to a somewhat simplified model of just two tiers, going from $90 per day. Well, actually, the first 30 days of employment for a substitute teacher was at 80 and then it go, on day 31, it went to 90. We're recommending that it, if somebody has a bachelor's degree or teacher certification that they begin at $100 per day. Most of our subs are with us for quite a while, so it really represents about a $10, $10 per day increase. And then without a bachelor's degree, it would be $90 instead of 70 and 80 for the tiered system in the past. The financial impact for the remainder of this fiscal year is estimated to be between $8,000 and $12,000. And then because we do have a certain percentage, around us, on average, 6% to 7% of our substitute requests go unfilled, higher in some months like December, lower in September, October. But we do expect and hope to be able to fill all substitute requests, which would, could potentially have about a $15,000 impact. But we estimate that we will have sufficient funds in that line to cover the impact.
Well, we'll have to make it work because we need to have coverage in the classroom, so it's not like that, it's not an option. So hopefully we will cover it. Any questions from the committee?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Conroy.
I don't have a concern about raising the rate, although what it does, it kind of for me brings up the idea again of should we be looking to hire one or two full-time floating paraprofessionals? So in the memo, it says that teacher's day for a substitute would be 6.75 hours. So at $100 per hour.
Per day.
Per day. It would be $1,481 per hour, which would put them, which would put that person at just really in between step one and step two of our paraprofessional scale right now. So given that we know that we have multiple absences per day, more than multiple, like five to 10 throughout the district, if we were, for example, to hire a floating paraprofessional at step two, which currently is $14.99, that would cost us, if we had, if they had started on January 5, because some data that we had seen took us through January 4, it would cost us $10,320 for the remainder of this year.
For one.
For one. Which we're gonna spend either through attempting to get subs or, and so I just, again, if we're just talking about do we bump up the rate, that's fine, but we're actually reaching the point where we're now paying, we're paying the same rate as, as what we're paying paraprofessionals. We have multiple vacancies every day. Why not get somebody who's potentially more stable because this is an actual full-time job as opposed to hoping that every 24, 48 hours, we can staff? And what it may do is take some of the, you know, as it is right now, we can't staff all of our sub needs. We have, we have ones we can't fill now. Maybe adding one or two floating FTEs is that gap because it may or may not be the people who are our subs now. Now, some of those people may apply, but some of them may not because they don't want to commit to full-time. So it may help us close that gap.
Do the, do the subs and the paras work the same amount of hours?
Yes, generally.
There may be a little bit of a variation, but as a rule, they're working the same amount of hours. So because I'm asking that question because of Mark's projections, we are talking apples to apples, right? So it's close enough that the, the rate, if we hire him at a two and we, and we're paying him for 6.75 hours, it's roughly just around the $100 a day. Mark?
Yeah, if, I mean, if we were paying, if we were paying $1,499 at 6.75 hours, it'd be $101 a day.
Okay. Effectively the same. Mr. Wiggins, if, you know what, I think just to get you on microphone if you don't mind.
I'm not gonna disagree. That's absolutely the positive impact on students is anytime you have employees that you can count on to provide the service to students, that's better for you. I do need to point out that typically speaking, one of the reasons that communities do tend to avoid in this particular area hiring the permanent subs, whether they be teachers, whether they be paraprofessionals, is because once you make, hire a permanent employee, you now have a health insurance impact. You have a retirement impact. So there are other impacts that don't directly come on the school budget, but will come on the community's budget. And so I think we just need to be cognizant of that if we move in that direction. Is it better for students that we absolutely know we've got employees who are ready to fill in when we need them? Absolutely, there's no question about that. Is there an impact beyond the actual salary that we would take care of? We also need to be aware of that as well. That was the only point I wanted to make.
Sure. That's a fair point. That's a fair point, but we do need some stability in the classrooms. We, and it's also going to take away some of the burden of the secretaries in the buildings who are getting up at 5 o'clock in the morning to make calls. And I know there's been some technological advances that have helped with some of the planning, but there's a, and I can appreciate Terry's comments about the impact, the greater financial impact on the town, but I would want, you know, I'd rather opt for better stability and better, for the students in this case than what would be a small increase in the impact of health insurance on the town. And I'm not being cavalier about that, but I think you have to kind of balance what's right for the students. And we gotta, we gotta work at getting the teachers to stay in the classrooms, but things do happen and there's higher absentee rate in the Clyde Brown and that's because there's younger kids there and they're traveling flus and germs, so it can be understood, but we still have to deal with the absenteeism and the fact that if we had floaters in the district that could go from school to school or be in one school at one time and maybe then, you know, one of the other schools are split, I think that would help. Robin, any thoughts?
I like the idea of having the stability in the room. Do you think that you could get us some numbers as to what the impact would be to the town if we did that? I don't know what the cost of like.
It's usually around 20, I think.
Yeah.
It runs, kind of the full salary. Fully loaded.
And that's, and that would be if they opt, if that person opted to take health insurance through here, which would be, which would mean we're hiring somebody who.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Two things, well, one thing we've done to help out at Clyde Brown is we have some paraprofessionals that are focused during the midday recess and lunch duties and social emotional assistance during basically the midday recess, lunchtime. And what we often do is ask them to increase their day so that they have longer hours than they normally do. Paraprofessionals in the building often can be the teacher of record for the day and then we hire a sub to be the paraprofessional in the classroom because our paraprofessionals are very skilled and they know the students well already, they know the routine, so they serve as, as the teacher for the day and then we backfill the para vacancy. But, and I agree that I, I think in some ways, if the budget could afford it, we, we could, we'd need both because hiring one floater for the district only takes care of one absence.
Right.
One teacher absence, whereas, and, and many of the subs, I don't think we've given you this information yet, but the, many of the subs, substitute needs come from team meetings. They cover for the teacher just for an hour or hour and a half maybe while the teacher attends the IEP meeting and then that substitute moves on to the next coverage for a teacher who needs to attend a different meeting or they, you know, assist in other ways. So we're, December was, we had more unfilled slots in December, actually not more sub needs necessarily, but I think the substitutes themselves were also busy and maybe not wanting to work in December if they were busy with their own lives.
So, Mark, you are looking at, you are proposing two?
I was, I didn't necessarily have.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily have a number, but given that our sub needs in October and November and December were 14 people a day.
Like Nancy was saying, like one person can't cover 14 people.
No, but if we're, if we're consistently in that same timeframe, short, one to two people every day.
Because we have to look at the slots we can't fill.
Then we may be filling slots we can't fill or at a minimum, we're spending the same amount of money, maybe a little bit more if they opted for benefits, to know that we have somebody.
And I.
And it's not that there, and it's not that there won't be stuff for them to do.
Yeah, no, no, sure. It sounds like we would need like one per school, a permanent sub at the elementary school and then one for the middle school, one for the high school, so that you could rotate out, like that person could be the rotating person or if one teacher was sick and there weren't any team meetings, like they could fill that spot.
Right. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One thing we can do that it, it avoids the issue, the benefits issue that Mr. Wiggins brought up is we can hire, much like for maternity leave, long-term subs and the long-term subs get a, receive a higher rate of pay. Currently, I didn't address it here, but currently I believe they start at 125 per day because we, a few years ago, we raised the rate of pay, so I think it's 125 and it goes up to 135 after the first number of days. So we could look into, what I might suggest is ask Mr. Wiggins and myself to go back and look into creating a proposal of what we might do in terms of hiring long-term subs. Their stability there could be for a certain amount of time. We know May and June are very busy and anytime, anything after, in April vacation really, even April. So we could look into hiring more permanent, long-term sub people, maybe one per building for that time period, but I would recommend probably raising, well, I think we have to raise the rate of pay in the meantime.
And that's kind of why I put my coat on and came back up, because I was gonna say much the same thing. We really need to act on the substitute rates anyways because of the minimum wage issues that we face. But I think if you give Nancy and I a chance to come back to you with a plan, I mean, again, I do think it's a good idea. It just, you know, it does have an impact, but I think we could come up with a plan for you to consider at, you know, a subsequent meeting, possibly as early as the next meeting and for your consideration of some, some permanent subs or whatever we want to call them.
So I think for tonight, we should increase the rate as presented or we should have a vote. That's what I should say. Should have a vote for the rates that are presented. We should start looking at hiring long-term subs for the remainder of this year or to whenever, whatever you need them to, I don't know if that's straight to the end, last day of school or if it's June 1. That's, I'll defer to you on that. And then what we should do is put this on the FY '20 kind of budget list so that, those positions, we can then, we can then present to the town that we, we're still providing the same services, but we're, instead of paying for them through sub rates, we're now, because of stability, we can make an explanation. So I think we should, I like the idea and Mark and I had had a conversation about this a couple months, a couple weeks ago after we were talking about some of the sub, sub discussions, but I think we should try to get through, pass this tonight, get through the remainder of this year and then build in what the FTE is. So not saying that you should just, you don't have to rush to get it done for the next meeting, but if that's, we are also up against the budget process anyways.
I was gonna say, we're working on budget anyways, so.
So what, does that, does that sound like a plan to the committee? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I guess the only, passing, I guess the only thing that I, I would look at, maybe not part of, not just putting it into the budget process, but if we are, my concern with the lack of ability to fill roles and move, and the end result of that is pulling people or even, you know, if we don't technically need a sub because it's for a team meeting or something, well, whoever's covering that hour is not doing what they're hired to do and I'm fairly certain we don't have people just sitting around the building.
Yes.
Because they don't have a job they're supposed to be doing.
Correct.
So the end result is if we're pulling people to do, to cover an hour here, an hour there, they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, which means they're not providing the service that they're supposed to be providing. So, and hiring a full-time floating person may not solve that ability to not bring, get somebody in here every day, but I just think it's, it's at least making an attempt to, to solve that.
No, and I think the long-term sub is just a way to get through the remainder of this fiscal year, but I agree with you that we do need to look at something more permanent and stability.
So the request is for a plan of addressing it in fiscal 19.
Yes.
As well as.
FY '20.
What do we need to do to get through FY 19? And then what's the more permanent, long-term solution in 20?
That would be incorporated into the 20 budget.
That certainly would my answer.
Yes. That's how, when I was trying to summarize it, that's what I was envisioning. Not, not putting aside the idea and waiting until FY '20, but what do we need to do? And I think Nancy's suggestion of look at some long-term subs and hire them for the next four months, five months, that may be the way to just get us through.
Can I ask a quick question? So when, when there's an absence and you can't fill it or like what happens? Like do you ask the teachers to fill?
Yeah.
Does that work?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The, so at the middle high school.
Yeah.
It's less of a problem because in the contract, there is a provision to pay teachers who have a prep during that period to cover the class. And so usually that, that's what happens. The teachers are paid to cover the class and they either are on prep or perhaps a study hall that they already have, but they can combine and, and cover, cover two classes at once. So the teacher's contract has a provision that they get paid for that. But at Clyde Brown, that is not as easy or.
Yeah, sure. It's different. It's different.
Just a different schedule.
I would, I don't want to cut off the discussion, but I would take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion that we increase the sub, substitute compensation rates as presented.
Second.
A motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Kerry, did you vote?
Did you vote? I came in halfway through the conversation, so I didn't vote. Yes.
Okay. Welcome aboard.
Hi, sorry.
That's okay. All right. Next up, we don't, have no time in learning.
Correct.
Formal time in learning.
Correct.
This is always a learning environment. So the next thing is the superintendent's report.
And we were asking to do the budget update at the next meeting.
Yep, I agree.
Mr. Wiggins and I did meet and things are pretty much, there are no surprises, pretty much on track, but we'll have a, a formal update for you at the next meeting.
And so just to kind of go back, that, that first pass at the budget will be what we know contractually and what we know right now. It's not going to be building in.
This was going to be a budget update on this fiscal year.
Oh, this, I'm sorry. I thought it was not, it's not '20.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Because we're still holding off the cost centers, we still need to.
Okay, good, perfect.
Transportation is, I believe, our next cost center we're tackling.
And then early childhood.
And then early childhood. And Mr. Wigan is in the process of estimating our FY '20.
So, the budget update is for '19.
FY '19.
Okay, perfect.
But we are not in need of any transfers yet, et cetera. It was just an update.
All right.
So, capital project update, Mr. Wigan and Mr. Engler are here to speak to an update on the portable classroom.
John, you're finishing up the memo as you sat, as you sit there?
Back of the napkin. No, no, they've been working a lot on this. So, in your packets, I included this current memo, plus the three previous, or two previous memos, so there are three.
We've been talking about this for a while.
Because we've been talking about it for the past three meetings, so I.
Thank you.
Put them all in there, just so we all have all the information.
Excellent, thank you.
And, and again, John did, I mean, John did all the work on this, really. I just kind of did the writing. But there's really three main quotes that we got. One was involved with moving the annex in its entirety to this site. Two more quotes, which I think were of principal interest. There were additional quotes as well, as I noted in my number four, but there were two additional quotes regarding new classroom configurations from this company. And then, as I say, there were quotes on splitting the annex up and doing some different things with the annex. Basically, if I were to try and summarize anything, and I certainly want John to weigh in on this, it's far more expensive to move the annex than I certainly anticipated. I mean, and certainly, I was the one who put this, you know, he and you bond, so to speak. And quite honestly, I have to believe that if we went out, you know, based on other companies, you know, again, I talked to, and you got some of the memos from earlier, that if we actually went out to bid and specified we wanted two 900-foot, square-foot classrooms, we didn't want bathrooms, we were going to hook them up to the building and, and pretty straightforward, you know, trailers, basically, that we could do this, you know, again, in that $150,000 range or less, if we went out to bid. I can't guarantee that, but the only way we would know that is actually go out and do an RFP, but I certainly think that to move a 12-year-old building for $182,000 does not make any sense.
Remember, we talked about how expensive that was, John? Remember that?
Yes.
It's a lot of money, 180. We are in the wrong business. We should be operating cranes and trucks. So, part of, part of this discussion and, was that we were presented with what is our building, and what would it take to get our building over to this complex to give us space?
From right over there?
From right over there, just on the other side of the hill, in a little, well, a big building in between there. And thank you for the hard work, and it wasn't for naught, because I think we owed, we owed it to the town, and we owed it to the district to really exhaust and look at, look at all options, and we can open this up to a vote, but I, I think at the cost of moving it for $182,000, and then being generous and using your site work, the setup cost of between 25 and 50, I'll give you 25, that's a, that's, we're over $210,000 to move a building we, from 400 yards over here. If we were in the $50,000 range, we'd be having a different conversation and probably saying, let's find the money and let's do this, but I, I just don't think it's fiscally responsible for a 12-year-old building that.
Well, in reality, you might get eight more years out of it.
We might, right? It would be helpful.
I mean, I think typically speaking, when you're talking about this type of, you know, modular classroom, portable classroom, you're talking about a 20-year use for life max. You got 12 into it now, and you're going to move it, so that's going to do some stuff to it.
Right. So, I, I'm sorry that you've had to put all this time and energy, but I think it was important for us to, to run this out and to see. We still have space needs, they're not going away, it's just that it's not feasible to spend $200,000 on a building that's three-quarters of a way done, and who knows what's going to happen in the move, even if we did move it, you know? I'm sure they're going to promise that it'll be fine, but it's probably never going to be the same once you pick it up and, and you move that, so. I don't know if anyone else in the committee has any other thoughts? I'm not trying to monopolize it, but I just think 200,000 is.
No, I agree, but, Mr. Chair, what, I know we have to figure out what we're going to do with it, so is now the plan just to scrap it?
I think they're going to just rip it down, right? Don't they?
Or do we put it out?
Sell it?
I know, didn't the town express interest?
The town would have to move it for 182,000?
It'd be the same cost.
I think actually, my, my suggestion would be that what we would do is if, is that if the decision is we're not going to use it, then we would actually, we don't necessarily need to do it tonight, I can formalize a, make a formal memo for you folks to vote on at your next meeting, is that we vote formally disclose the annex, in which case, what will happen is, as part of that process, I actually can issue a bid for disposal, to see if anybody is interested in buying it, basically, okay?
Okay.
There's a lot of different ways you can do it under state law, but you can auction it, you can, you can basically do it by bid. I think the first thing I would do is try to do it by bid, and say, if anybody's interested in it, you got to take it away, you got to take it away within this timeframe.
Right.
And what are you going to give us for it? And, you know, to be perfectly honest, if somebody said, we can get it out of there in the week that we have to get it out of there, and we'll give you $10,000 for it.
Thank you very much.
Take it. Take the money.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. There was expressed interest from the Department of Public Works for the annex.
Do they, do they know the cost is 180?
I'm certain that they do not know the cost, but I don't know, Terry, if your process.
I have actually spoken with.
With Jim?
With Jim.
Okay.
And I think that, that interest has waned.
Okay, okay. I understand, understandably so.
Because if they could find $182,000, I want to ask a lot more questions, right? No, I, I think we probably all looked at it, that it wasn't going to be that much money. Any other thoughts from, so, the one, the one other, and clearly, if no one wants it, no one auctions it, no one takes it, it's not going to impact the cost of the building project.
Already worked in.
They'll demolish that, like, everything else.
Already worked in. The demolition is part of it.
If nobody takes it, it'll get demolished.
And there's no extra costs incurred.
Is there cost savings if someone else moves it?
I can't imagine that it would be that much.
I'm just wondering, if somebody came and said, we'll take it away from you, and we're not going to give you anything, is it worth it for us to say?
I don't know so, but I don't think so.
Yeah, I'd say probably not.
Minimal. I mean, typically speaking, when something's built into the base budget, and the demo is part of the base budget, is rare that you get, you certainly don't get a dollar-for-dollar savings, and it's rare that you really get a whole lot of money back.
Well, we tried. We still have to look at the space issue, it's just that we're not going to be able to do it with something that we own as of right now. Is everyone good with that? We don't have to take a vote, because we're not looking to spend money.
Okay.
I think we're all in agreement. Is that fair to say, that we're all in agreement, that this is not going to?
Yes.
Are we going for consensus?
Sure.
That this is not going to work at this time?
My, well, I, just to be clear in my mind, my consensus is, is that you're not interested in moving it. I will come back to you at a subsequent meeting in the next couple of meetings with a proposal to ask you to formally dispose of it at the end of the school year, at which point that'll authorize me to go out and do the bidding process and seek.
Do you want us to give you that authorization now, or do you want to wait and be more formal? We've done it with vehicles.
I'd rather, I'd rather, I, let me just double-check state law first, because if I need some kind of formality in the motion.
That's fair.
You know me, I'll write it out for you.
All right, that, that works. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, sorry. One other question. Is it okay for us to notify the elementary school building committee? Because this was one of the items on their kind of running tick list, that what our, what our intentions were for that, so.
I believe that's appropriate.
And actually, I have a transition meeting on Thursday, I think it is, and I'll let the, I'll let the builder know as well.
Great, thank you.
Here.
No, wait, do we have anything, anything else in the capital? It's 2019, Mr. Engler.
It is.
We are getting close. How's the auditorium looking?
He's going to hear that every meeting.
Still shooting for the same timeframe, in March, start demo, and then delivery for the 23rd or something of that nature, and then finishing up that week, and then I think we're going to have our first performance week after that, possibly being held in that by the, most of the, the August as well.
I look forward to having a cup of coffee with you in those new comfortable seats.
Diet Coke?
Diet Coke, coffee, whatever you would like. It's my, my treat. There's no alcohol in this building.
There's no food allowed.
Yeah, no food. On the new seats.
No drinks.
You cannot spill your diet.
We are going to have a one-day policy, allowing.
You can just look in the door and drop your drink.
All good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Nancy.
So, engineering course, you have a, just an update in your packets on the high school engineering program that Mr. Malaney will be bringing to you in his program of studies, usually at the end of March, but we, just to recap, we were generously funded to start the, this process through Merit for teacher training, materials, the licensing that lasts for three years for the engineering course. The teacher will be trained in Texas over the summer. We do, the district does pay the cost of travel and lodging while she's there, but everything else is covered, but, so I included the, the basic information about the course. It's very right up our alley in terms of the goals, of having real-world, hands-on, inquiry-based instruction going on. We are proposing, and Mr. Malaney will come and speak to this more, but to have piloted the first year with 12 students, and we've been conversing with a teacher in Foxborough who runs this program. He recommends that we start out with seniors because of the level of math required, and then there is a second course. If we find this one to be everything we hope it is, we can expand later on, and we can also open it up to, you know, if there are juniors who have the right level of mathematics, we would consider that as well, but I think it's going to be a powerful elective for students to take in their senior year, and it can also mesh well with their senior project. So, if somebody is very interested in something, some kind of project, they can tackle it through the engineering design process in this course. As I mentioned, or as Mr. Malaney mentioned before, we do not need an increase in FTEs to add this, because our Meredith Young will be the instructor, and we have a smaller group of sophomores, basically smaller class sizes right now than we used to have, so we're able to swap out one section of a course and add in the engineering.
So, do you need anything from us, or is this just an update and more information based on?
Just an update.
Okay. That's helpful, that's very interesting, interesting concept and a great opportunity, and, once again, appreciative of Merit in their generous donation to allow us to do what is a special program for the school.
Thank you. And then lastly, I spent the morning at the library with a lot of citizens and town officials at the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, which was superb. It's run by the Massachusetts MAPC.
Metropolitan Area Planning Committee, or Planning Council?
Yes, Planning Council, that's it. And looking at the strengths and vulnerabilities of Milis as a community, and every, all the buildings, all the people who live here, and what we can do to plan for climate change. So, I have to say, it was very interesting, a very good process, and they're meshing it with open space and recreational planning, so I think it's, in the town of Milis, there's a lot of good visioning and planning for the future that's happening right now, and I appreciated the efforts of Bob Weiss, our energy manager, and Mike Kazinsky, and all the others who were involved in planning that.
It was a great opportunity. Unfortunately, some of us were unable to attend because of work schedule, but if there's any future meetings, maybe they'll have them in the evening to kind of split the difference.
There is a February 7th meeting of the Open Space Recreation Group, Planning Group, and that is an evening meeting.
Ah, good.
So, that will be coming up.
Okay. Anything else, Nancy, on your report?
No, that's it, thank, oh, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
One last thing. This Friday, when we have our release day, I'm sorry, not this Friday, next Friday, January 18th, Clyde Brown and the middle school teachers will be doing work on their passion projects, areas, curriculum areas that they're passionate about, and they, many of them involve interdisciplinary, hands-on, real-world applications, pardon me, and the high school will be working on standards-based assessing within the classroom.
Moving on to my, my report, the chairman's report, not much to add. We had a brief conversation earlier. We're about to formally kick off the FY '20 budget process, but in order to do that, we have to kind of finish up the strategic budget review. We have a couple more cost centers. Transportation, we have been pretty good with transportation for many years, and so it's more of an update and just kind of a check-in this year. We have to look at pre, early education, I should say, which would be pre-K in kindergarten, and then, what was that, why am I blanking? What's the other one?
I think those are the last two.
Those are the only two?
Yeah, because I looked today on the list, unless I missed.
No, and I think we had to circle back to some, just formalizing or putting in the same structure for the athletics, but that was more of, we had the information, it's just getting it into, so we all have all of them in a consistent format. So, a lot of work has been done, which started in the summer with us, asking a lot of questions, and a lot of work has been done by the superintendent, and Terry, and the admin team, in pulling this all together, so hopefully, it will allow us to be strategic and to be thoughtful in the FY '20 budget process, and, and kind of look at, or identify any areas where we may need to focus on based on the analysis, which, just one other thought, is we have tomorrow night, and I know there's a couple that are unable to attend, but we have the tri-board meeting, the first tri-board meeting of this fiscal year. There's going to be at least three, possibly four, one each month, running up until spring town meeting, and it's going to be kind of an overview of where each, the town side, the, the school side, the capital planning committee will be there too as well, but just to kind of talk about the budget process and try to be somewhat consistent. Once again, when we brought in the outside consultant, we were, and we passed, and we had some area, we had some work to do on our budget process, but a lot of what they were proposing as industry standard and best-case scenario, we were already doing, so we were in good shape, and we did make some modifications, so I think as we progress over the years, the school and the town side budgets will start to look more similar, and they'll be easier to kind of review when you're looking at them side by side, even though they are distinct and they're voted on separately, the consistency in the format. So, tomorrow night's meeting, that will, it's, it's going to be more of a general conversation, and then to identify this year's budget, and then looking at long, start the conversation about long-term. budget, and then looking at, start the conversation about long-term issues and, and costs that are coming up. And that's one of the reasons why the capital planning committee is going to be there. So, that is it for my report. Subcommittee report. Anything from the elementary school building committee? Denise? No? Okay. Correspondence?
In your packets, you have an article that we'd like to highlight from the Milis Midway News of the donation by the Babfar Construction Corporation, the donation they provided to the Town of Milis worth over $20,000, or up to probably more than $20,000 in large propane heaters that are being used to heat inside the Clyde Brown new construction building, which is saving the town approximately $20,000 in that project. And very much appreciated that Babfar Construction Company had done this with the library as well, very generous supporters of the Town of Milis. We also had, there's an article on a wonderful professional actor who came from the British Isles, Great Britain, through a link that Patsy Diver, our librarian, had, and did a wonderful performance for our students. And then, on our spring track, actually, winter track is currently happening, and our girls and boys did a great job this past weekend. And a couple of our kids got first and third place in their events. And this article is on Yvonne Fitzgerald, who is now the track coach. We have some wonderful support with other people helping out. So, that's it. Oh, and then finally, yeah, no, that's it for correspondence.
Okay. Any school committee announcements? We need to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Milis teachers, clerical, and the superintendent's contract. So, we would need a motion to move into executive session, not to return to open session.
So moved.
A motion's been moved and seconded. This is a roll-call vote. Ms. Roach?
Yes.
Ms. Briggs?
Yes.
Mr. Conroy?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
And I am an aye as well. So, we're going to go into executive session, not to return to open session. Our next meeting will be January 29th.
At 7:30?
At 7:30, please. Good night.